Welcome to all of you and let's call our meeting to order. Madam Clerk, do you have any public comments?
No, sir.
Mr. Hewitt, do you have anything to say before we get started? Katie, we're glad you're here and you're representing the Richard Green Law Firm. And we're very informal, so you can ask and say you do within the limits of legal behavior. You can do about what you want to do. We have the dedicated time for you, one hour. We're getting started a few minutes late. Obviously, we'll adjust that as we need to give you equal and fair time. And what's the pleasure of the Commissioners? Is it like for us to sit where she is? Madam Clerk, can you record from there?
Yes, sir.
Or do you want her to cede the podium?
She's fine.
Are you comfortable at the table?
I'm fine. Ready to hear.
If you would, just speak into the microphone so that the Clerk can record. He'd probably just pull that to you. And remind the Commissioners to speak into the microphone. And I guess without further direction from the Commissioners, I would just say to you, Katie, just tell us a little bit about you and the firm. And then I'm sure the Commissioners will have some questions for you. And again, thank you for being here.
Absolutely.
The floor is yours.
All right. Well, I'm glad to be here. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to interview. First and foremost, wanted to speak for Mr. Green. He got called into a last-minute Board of Education phone conference, so that's why he's not here today. I believe a few of you were on the board the last time Mr. Green and I interviewed with you guys. As we stated then, which is still the case now, Rick and I work as a team. We coordinate with each other about most issues that come across our firm, all the way from real estate to school board issues. We are a team, so even though I will be the main point person attending the meetings and your main point of contact, Rick would be here in the instance that I could not make things or also would be someone for me to consult with about any sort of issues. We submitted our resume previously. I don't know if you guys had an opportunity to review it, but I came to this area in 2012. I originally started up at the courthouse, worked for Judge Ola Lewis for the trial court coordinator there. And that was a good opportunity to, I was able to interact with a lot of judges from all across the state, a lot of different county government officials, the county attorney, individual town attorneys. So I got a lot of experience in kind of different areas of law through that. And then once, I was there for about two years and then I've been working with Rick since 2014. I do a little bit of general practice, a little bit of everything. I do estate work, guardianships, general civil litigation. Real estate is our main bread and butter, so there's usually mainly real estate closings, but a lot of litigation that arises out of that we get involved with. So kind of outside of real estate, we do a little bit of everything. So I think that's kind of good experience for anyone for a town attorney to have because you're practicing in various areas of law while you do represent the town itself, all the way from consulting, you know, Mr. Dixon and some criminal issues they may have, all the way to just interpreting statutes and administrative law, especially with all the environmental issues that beach towns represent. So I'd be happy to answer any questions that you guys have about me or Rick or the firm.
Who wants to go first? I'm sure you've got a long list, each one of you.
First of all, thank you. Thank you for being here. And I guess my first question would be that Mr. Green at one point was the town attorney.
Yes, sir.
Do you know if during that time, Mr. Green did any work on CAMA or easements or the type of issues that we commonly address yet because of our beach nourishment programs?
I can't speak to his time as the mayor, but just in our real estate practice of dealing with CAMA regulations and easements and things like that, we deal with that kind of thing all the time. We do a lot of closings on Holden Beach. We've had a lot of CAMA permitting processes that we assist clients with, easements between, you know, landowners. And I'm sure, I know he has worked for, not necessarily the town of Holden Beach, but other government agencies in terms of some of their land property issues. But I can't specifically speak to his time while he was at Holden Beach.
Okay. And have, excuse me, do you know if the firm or obviously yourself have had any experience complying with Freedom of Information law requests and public disclosure?
Absolutely. With the Board of Education, we deal with that frequently. We've, our experience mainly is through the Board of Education issues that arise through them, but yes, we are familiar with that.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Pat?
Yeah. When, I'm just thinking in terms of different things that we've dealt with over the, over the last few years and occasionally town attorney calling in additional help in areas that, that she was, you know, not as expert in. So I'm just wondering, what are areas that you in particular, like personnel issues or are there areas that, that you would say I would call in an expert? And do you have that network that would allow you to tap somebody that you know has a good track record in your, in that area?
Absolutely. In terms of areas that we may not be familiar with, definitely when it comes to some environmental regulations, things like that, if there's disputes between, that really deals specifically with environmental concerns, we would consult with. But the good thing about practicing law in this modern day and age is the resources that are available. There is a town attorney webpage and listservs that people constantly send ideas back and forth. So that is especially, you know, Board of Education, when we have that issue and concern, we have multiple outlets we can go to and seek advice. We do have established relationships with some firms in Raleigh and Wilmington through Board of Education, through things in general, because there's things that we've referred out. But that listserv and the UNC School of Government Network for Town Attorneys is a great resource that I would go to, just if I had a question for interpretation issues, all the way to a referral. That is usually where we start with, is our listservs of people that are actively in this role across the county. And also just simple bouncing ideas off of other town attorneys in Brunswick County that we have relationships with. And also being a coastal town, trying to make those connections more so to coastal town attorneys rather than just general town attorneys. But that would be our, where we'd start with any sort of referral system.
Anything else?
No, since we interviewed just less than two years ago.
Yeah.
But some of the things you've said right now, we didn't get into last time, so this is very useful. But I have to admit, I only came with that one question.
Mr. Murdock?
That was a question I was gonna ask also. Something was outside of the, I'm gonna use the word talent, not loosely, but if it was over your head, how would you handle it? Another question, do you, have you worked with like personnel issues, workers comp, stuff like that? Have you guys dove into that at all?
We have with the school board.
Like we had some staff issue come up?
Yeah, we regularly with school board personnel concerns really do take a lot of the school board time and energy when it comes to meetings and special meetings. There is a big emphasis on personnel issues, a lot of employees, so that is something we regularly deal with. And then also, since we interviewed, our staff is still the same. We still have three paralegals in the office for Rick and I. Just wanted to make sure you guys knew that our resources were still the same as when we submitted everything last time.
And I know you had this on there, but attending meetings like on an as-needed basis, if we were to call you in, if we needed you, you could, there's no problem with attending?
Yeah, as long as it's not last second notice and we don't have anything else going on. But most of the time, like I said, I would be the point person. If I couldn't make it, Rick would be there. But we should not have any issue and may be able to make those meeting times, especially with the monthly meetings being at five o'clock. I don't see any conflict that would prevent especially me or Rick from being here.
That's all I got.
One other question. The hourly fee is $250. Is that for attending the meetings as well as doing legal work?
That's for everything. And then with us just being a local firm, you know, we are open to people just if they want to stop by, say I have a question, you know, our doors are always open too for any sort of issues that may arise. You know, we don't have to wait until meetings, but we will always have an open door policy.
Okay, thank you.
Following along the lines of compensation, how about the paralegals and the secretarial staff? How do you bill for that?
So our paralegals and secretarial staff, Rick and I mainly do when it comes to the legal work will just be us. We would not charge you for any sort of their time when it comes to administrative things of, you know, copying, things like that. What we would charge you for would just be the legal work that we do.
That's a nice answer. I'm not accustomed to hearing an attorney tell me that.
Well, Rick and I really do a lot of our own work. I mean, the girls are there mainly for real estate and other things and filtering calls, but when it comes to substantial, substantiative work, we are the ones that do that and we, you know, we don't bill for administrative things.
Okay. So you do the legal research and the paralegal does it?
Correct.
You bill quarter hour, half hour?
We usually do a quarter of an hour, but we would be amenable to, you know, discussions on that.
I don't think I missed it, but of course, I've known Mr. Green for a long time. I was trying to recall, was he ever a, an attorney for any other municipality or city?
He was the town of Holden Beach attorney, I think in like 2006, 2007. I know off and on, we've represented Barnum Town, we represent them right now. But in terms of municipalities, I think it was just Holden Beach. He's been with the Board of Education since 2011, I believe.
As far as I know, the firm's always been in good standing with the bar association, still is, I assume.
Yes, sir.
Nothing pending or?
Knock on wood.
Yeah. In today's world, that's amazing. I'm gonna ask you a question. There's no right or wrong answer, but in your expectation of time allowance, what's your perception of the time that you have to dedicate to this?
Between Rick and I, we could do, you know, a minimum of 20 hours a week, but also with us working together as a team, we can shift things around to make it to where one of us could add more hours to that if necessary. But a minimum at this point would be we could do at least 20 hours.
So flexibility is not a problem?
Correct.
In an emergency, on a weekend or something, you're gonna be available by phone?
Yes, we can always be available by phone. And, you know, being local too, we could, true emergency and need to physically be here, you know, Rick lives on the island, I'm a Brunswick County resident as well, so we could be here, you know, if that was required as well.
I also serve as emergency director and I know we have some issues from time to time that we do need some legal counsel in some circumstances. And that's good to know that you'd be available. Ms. Moore, are you able to hear us?
Yes.
First of all, welcome and thank you for offering your services to the town of Holden Beach. We are short Mr. Brown today. He couldn't make it and we had one of our council people, due to personal reasons, had to resign earlier this month. And so you have three Commissioners and me as the mayor, Alan Holden, will be talking with you today. Town Clerk and the town manager are here also. So with that, I would say to you, unless Mr. Hewitt has otherwise plans, would just simply say to you, Ms. Moore, if you would, just tell us a little bit about yourself. And obviously, we have this page that you have prepared front and back for us to read. But the floor is yours, ma'am. Tell us what you want us to know about you.
Well, I guess I've been living at Holden for about four years now. I really love it. I really love the community. I have been practicing mainly intellectual property and business law, but I've been branching out as much as I can in recent years. I am an avid researcher. It's one of those things that I actually enjoy and spend a lot of downtime doing, even on things that don't seem to matter. Obviously not the best at speaking about myself. I, you know, I've been practicing in North Carolina for four years. I'm licensed in Kentucky and South Carolina as well. I have been getting in, more and more into property law, but I do not handle closings. And I, I think that's about it. There's not that much about me, other than what I do for work and walking on the beach.
Okay. Whenever you said living at Holden Beach, do you live on Holden, on the island?
Yes, sir. On the island, yes.
All right. Well, I thank you again for showing an interest in working with your town. All right, who has a list of questions? We have, each one of us have a legal pad here and every one of us have a full page, front and back, of questions, but we realize we have only an hour to talk with you, so we'll make it easier on you, okay?
Okay.
All right, who wants to go first? Ms. Pat?
I guess I will.
Mr. Mike Sullivan?
Good afternoon, Ms. Moore. My name is-
Hi, good afternoon.
My name is Mike Sullivan. And I'll just ask you a few questions about your experience. And I guess you know from living on the island, one of the important aspects that the Board of Commissioners addresses on a continual basis is the nourishment of the beach and keeping the strand viable and protective of the property. So we do a lot of work with FEMA and CAMA. And have you had any experience with CAMA?
Only in getting my grandmother's lot over at Oak Island sold. I don't have a lot of experience with them personally. I do work with a lot of other nonprofits, but not with CAMA personally. I have read up on different things. I've had friends wanting to extend tiers out into the intercoastal and all of that stuff. So I have read up on them, but I do not have a working relationship with them at this time.
You mentioned that you've been branching out into property law, not closings. I understand that. But in your experience in property law, have you dealt with acquiring easements or?
Yes, I have done a few easements. They're all recorded. That's, I, not, you know, not a ton, but I do have the experience in the process.
And as a solo practitioner, what would your restrictions be as associated with your ability to provide time for, for the duties that we may require?
Well, I can really do whatever is necessary. I know that in the description, it said about 10 hours a month, and that is way more than doable for me. As long as I have an idea of what you need, I can always have that available for you. I work on a deadline priority basis and I usually, for the most part, stay pretty far ahead of most of my deadlines. So I'm always able, so far, I've always been able to fit in anything that needs to be done. Right now, I'm at about 40 hours a week and previously I had been closer to the 70 range. So I can add in really as much as you guys, I would assume you guys could need, as long as you don't need 40 hours a week from me, which I could probably make happen if I needed to, but it doesn't seem like that's the need you all have.
No. It's, we won't need you much at all and then we'll need you for some, some issues to take up some time. How about dealings with any of the regulatory organizations in Brunswick County or Brunswick County itself? Have you had any dealings in that area?
Not very much. I'm aware of the system. My main thing that I have done locally is the Arts Council that I've been general counsel of for a while. So we mainly work with NCAC, which is the North Carolina Arts Council, but I do know that we've worked with a few other organizations locally. But again, it's not so much a working relationship. I have awareness of them and I'm happy to make those relationships happen, but at this time, I don't have a personal or professional one.
Okay. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Ms. Pat?
Okay. You say you've been practicing in North Carolina for years and in Brunswick County, you've been working with the Arts Council. Do you have within North Carolina a way of working or network that if you run into something that you need advice, assistance, or maybe to call in somebody to help you out on something you're not familiar with it, that you can, you can quickly manage this?
Oh, absolutely. That's probably the most important thing, as a solo practitioner, to have colleagues that you can discuss things with. I work all over North Carolina. I have clients in Charlotte, which is why I'm here right now, clients in Asheville, all pretty much everywhere. So I do have attorneys kind of in every general area that I can reach out to. I have a, about five attorneys in the Wilmington Wrightsville area that I'm very close with, that I have worked with a lot. And of course, South Carolina, that doesn't really matter for you guys. But yes, I do have a, I would say, a very good network of other attorneys to speak with.
Have you, have you dealt much with Freedom of Information requests over your past few years?
I want to say probably about three years ago was the last time that I've dealt with them a lot. I did a lot of work in, when I was in law school at the clerkship that I had that had to do with those. The past couple of years, not so much because of the focus of, I guess, where I've been going. But I have dealt with it in the past and I don't think I would have any issues revisiting.
I know you said that you're somebody who is sort of a personal researcher to just expand knowledge. Do you feel fairly familiar with what I call municipal laws and regulations of North Carolina?
Yes, I reviewed them. I was looking at them, I guess, a couple of days ago. And these are things, all of the general statutes and the municipal laws. I, I've had to review them from time to time for different things. So I do feel like I'm at least acquainted with them. I couldn't recite them for you at this moment in time, but I would almost always double-check before telling anyone anything. I would never give you an absolute statement without double-checking, even if I thought I knew it for sure. So, but I know where to find most of the topics.
Just in terms of overall environmental issues, which, living on an island, on a coastal area, you always run into them, are you, again, in all of your seeking for knowledge and everything, you're fairly comfortable with where to go, how to handle environmental, any environmental issues that may come up?
I believe so. I originally wanted to practice environmental law back in the day, but I have an interest in it. And of course, like you said, living on an island, it, it makes that interest a little bit more necessary, I would suppose. So I do keep up to date with everything that's going on. I try to keep up to date with, you know, what's going on with our specific island, more so than anything, because it's where I live. But I do try to stay on top of all of the environmental issues we are currently facing.
Okay.
Sure. Mr. Murdock?
Good afternoon. I believe the two Commissioners before me pretty much touched on all points necessary for the, for our considerations. I do want to thank you for your interest in serving the town as the, as the attorney. And I really don't have any further questions at this time.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Alan Holden back to you. Can you tell us a little bit about your educational background?
Well, I went to University of Kentucky for undergrad. I have a degrees in biology, economics, and then nonprofit administration. And then I went to University of Louisville, where I completed my JD in 2015. No PhD yet.
How's the Louisville basketball team doing after a recent visit with North Carolina?
You know, I, I never switched over to Louisville fandom, stayed with Kentucky, which is hurting worse than ever this year. So all I can say is that Duke, Carolina, and UK are not having a great year. And as long as no one's having a good year, I can deal with it.
Mr. Hewitt? Madam Clerk, you got anything? The rate that you suggested at $150 an hour, do you bill by quarter hour, half hour, full hour? How do you bill?
I usually do by quarter hour, by 15 minutes. I just feel like that's more fair, personally. You know, if I only do 10 minutes of work, I don't feel comfortable billing for 30 minutes worth. That's about it.
Okay. All right, I don't think I have anything else. Look forward to meeting you face to face. I don't think I have.
No. And thank you so much for letting me do this call remotely. This is the first time that I've returned to Charlotte in a year to see my clients here, so it just didn't match up well, but thank you so much.
All right, well, thank you. Anybody else got anything else? All right, thank you so much and have a wonderful day.
You too. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to recess until three o'clock. Okay, we're back in session at three o'clock. And Mr. Coe will certainly appreciate your being here today. I'm Alan Holden, the mayor. Mike Sullivan. Ms. Pat on the end down there. pronounce your name, Ms. Pat.
Kwikowski.
Kwinkowski. Brian Murdock here to my right. Commissioner normally sits here, had some personal issues come up. He has resigned in the past week, which we'll miss him greatly. And this gentleman here is tied up in some business stuff. He couldn't make it. But anyway, we're glad you're here and we'll proceed along with the town manager and our clerk, Ms. David Hewitt, town manager and clerk down here. Heather. So with that, we'll start and first of all, ask you, sir, and tell you that you've got the floor to tell us about yourself and tell us anything you want. And as we go through this hour together, you can ask us anything that you like. Very informal. Just speak into the microphone so Clerk can record this and we give you the floor, sir.
Very good, very good. Thank you. All right. I must say, I haven't interviewed anywhere in a long time. So this is kind of exciting for me. When I got out of graduate school at App State with my master's in public administration, I actually applied for a bunch of town manager jobs all around the state. And it actually was something that I enjoyed doing, going to different towns. was something that I enjoyed doing, going to different towns, meeting councils. It was interesting seeing how they had different setups. Uh, one of, one of my favorites was, and of course, that, at that point, twenty years ago, I was much younger, there was one where they were up on a stage and it was a semicircle and they put me right in the middle of the semicircle and I swear the back of my chair was on the edge of the stage and they were shooting at me from every direction and it was, uh, it was certainly a, a great experience. So I'm gonna start by telling you how I'm different than most. Obviously, everything you do is public record, so I know everyone who's applied, I know what their credentials are, 'cause I do my homework, I've seen, uh, who has represented you in the past. I did what any conscious, uh, you know, person seeking a position would do, which is I've researched what the town has faced over the years, what you're looking at recently, things of that nature. And so how I'm different is I'm a sole practitioner and a litigator. And what I mean by that is I've worked with big firms. I currently work associating with a lot of big firms and a lot of big files, but I am what you get. So when Mr., when Commissioner Sullivan wants to call the attorney, he's calling Steve. Or if the town manager wants to call the attorney, he's calling Steve. It's me, it's my cellphone, I'm the one that answers it. I'm the one that gets the, gives the advice, comes down and shows up. I don't have an associate I'm gonna ever send, I don't have anybody that necessarily will take my place, it's me. Now, there's good and bad with that. The good is, you know what you're gonna get because you'll know me by that point. The bad is, I rarely get to go out of town because things do come up, all right? And so I, I wanna suggest that, you know, it's a benefit because I'm the one you're getting the advice from, I'm the one that's doing the research, I'm the one you're communicating with, you're not dealing with a, a firm or multiple associates or otherwise, and I think that's a positive. I've spent a lot of time litigating cases in Brunswick County. As you've probably seen with my resume, I've represented, uh, North Brunswick Sanitary District, which is known as H2Go for the past decade. In fact, they originally hired me as a litigator and I litigated claims for them while they had a district council. After a year of litigating the claims for them, they actually hired me as their district council and I've been their district council. Uh, it'll be eleven years this summer. Uh, if you've been here in Brunswick County, you know that H2Go's been through a lot. It's been through a lot of politics, it's been through a lot of boards, and somehow the major staffers and myself have been able to continue and create continuity in that organization because I'm here to work at the direction of the board. One of the reasons they hired me at H2Go originally, from my understanding, was 'cause I had no ties to Brunswick County. In the past, they'd had attorneys that might advise them because they owned a piece of land or because they worked in the area or had friends or otherwise. And one of the benefits they got with me, and I was really the first one, I think they had seven attorneys in five years before me. One of the benefits was, is I'm here to work for you. I'm here to put my legal experience and abilities forth on your behalf based on what you tell me to do. When I say you, I mean the board, uh, and how the board directs me. And so, you know, I think that's a benefit that I also bring. Uh, I've litigated many cases in this county, huge cases, small cases. I also litigate all over eastern North Carolina. I'm not just a municipal attorney that has twenty towns that I'm trying to service. Currently, I have H2Go, which is my only municipal corporation that I represent, and then I have many individual clients that I represent. And I don't do anything transactional, and what I mean by that is I'm not drafting deeds or wills of that, or, or things of those natures. I'm litigating cases, I'm dealing with adversarial proceedings, et cetera. Uh, I've got cases as far as Greenville, uh, Wake County, Charlotte, uh, that I manage on my own. Uh, I have had associates over the years, but I've realized that, uh, it's difficult to get the associates to be me and do what I would do in those situations. And so I do have staff. Typically, I'll have two full-time staffers that assist me in the work, but I'm the attorney that's doing the work, so. Don't wanna talk too long, uh, certainly wanna give an opportunity, uh, for questions, uh, but as you see on the resume, I do have a master's in public administration. When I went through undergraduate school at Elon, I was into politics, I wanted to do something with regard to politics, ended up realizing that I wanted to be a public servant instead and got a, uh, public administration undergraduate degree from Elon, uh, double majoring in my political science. And then I went to App State, which had this just wonderful public administration, uh, MPA school that had just started. Went through that program, ended up in a little town called Biltmore Forest. Don't know if y'all have ever heard of it, but if you're going to the estates on the road to see the big, pretty house, it's this tiny little town on the left. And I got to work for a gentleman named Nelson Smith, who was the manager there when I was there. Uh, he used to be the manager in Southport, uh, just a, a great man, uh, wonderful manager, uh, but was sort of taken back by the attorneys that we were working with in the town. O. East Arns was our town attorney and he's a Hall of Famer in North Carolina. And so I decided at some point, even though I was married and owned a house, that I was gonna go back to law school. Uh, wife was iffy about that, but we ended up, uh, you know, selling our house and going to law school. And when I got out of law school, I moved to Wilmington. I got a job with Hedrick and Morton, which is an insurance defense firm. The advantage to going to work for an insurance defense firm as a litigator early is we got to try a lot of cases, we got to do a lot of mediations, we got to do a lot of things that if you go to a big firm, you never really get that much experience. Uh, the day I was sworn in, I, I deposed to a neurologist, had no clue what I was doing. Uh, you know, baptism by fire, I think is what they called it, but, uh, had a great opportunity for five years with a big firm that did strictly litigation, primarily, uh, insurance-related litigation. During that five years, I started building my own book of business because I come from, you know, three or four generations of entrepreneurs, folks that always worked for themselves, and that was kind of the plan. Uh, after five years, which I think is important, learning how to do it from those that knew how to do it, uh, I left the firm in two thousand eight. It's not a coincidence that that's when the market died. I was doing a lot of work in Carolina Beach and, uh, Wrightsville Beach and I had done, I still, it still hasn't been proven I'm wrong, but I think I did the first short sale in Wrightsville Beach in North Carolina, uh, back in oh-seven. Uh, that was back when they used to agree to share the debt among the creditors as opposed to just in line. Uh, but, you know, I, I, I built my own book and in two thousand eight, uh, with the consent and sort of nod of my partners, I left the firm. Uh, they were both, my partners at the time were both well-off, let me call it, and I was still a struggling young lawyer, trying to make my way. And so in two thousand eight, I left, hung a shingle, and started practicing mostly in the area of real estate and construction litigation. One of the things that I got hired by H2Go to do early on was to litigate a claim against a developer who wasn't paying their impact fees. So that's how I originally got hired by them. I probably got hired due to politics, 'cause I had done a really good case for a friend of one of the commissioners there and, uh, we were successful in that claim and they decided to hire me. And so from that point on, I've represented H2Go. Uh, personally, I, I probably have, I carry anywhere between twenty and thirty files at a time litigating and I'm constantly litigating all over eastern North Carolina. Uh, and so this would just be one more client that I would service, but I think I do have the time. I don't think I, I am, uh, to the point where I couldn't, uh, meet the, uh, criteria that was included within the, uh, proposal.
All right. Who wants to go first?
You want me to go first this time? Okay. Um, okay, I've, I've, I've listened to your background and what you've done and everything, but, um, why do you wanna take on being a town attorney?
Well, I, I think it sort of goes back to my undergraduate, graduate degree and the time I was in, uh, town management. When I was in Biltmore Forest and I left Biltmore Forest to go to, uh, law school, my mother said I was quitting the best job I, I would ever have and, uh, she's probably right. When I was in Biltmore, I made friends with all of law enforcement and public works director and public works and I just loved that, that sort of civic end of it. When I went to, when I came to Wilmington, I got really involved in the North Carolina Zaya Festival and then later I was on the board of directors at the Cameron Art Museum and that was sort of my, being involved in the community, my sort of civic, you know, uh, involvement. I have ceased to do any of that type of, of work, uh, two or three years ago and I wanted to seek an opportunity, uh, to, to do more of like what I'm doing in, uh, H2Go. Uh, at some point, I was on the phone with a colleague of mine that used to represent you guys, Noel Fox, who I've been dear friends with forever. Uh, she and I sort of started at the same time and worked through our, our, our way together in Wilmington and she had mentioned, uh, you know, this opening and had suggested I apply and I have to admit, I didn't apply the first go-round, even though we had talked about it, Noel and I, because I do represent H2Go and they meet on the third Tuesday of each month. Uh, and so that was a complication, I decided not to apply. It's funny, the day after the applications were in, Noel called me and, uh, and said, "Why didn't you apply?" You know? So, and, and I said, "Well, you know, I, I, the, the meeting's the same night, you know, I've been loyal to H2Go for a decade, I can't, you know, not be loyal to them." And, uh, and she said, "Well, you should apply anyway." And so I want that known upfront that, you know, that, that's potentially an issue, uh, in hiring me is that they, they meet on the, the third Tuesday. That being said, uh, you know, they moved their date at one time since I've been there, uh, for our executive director, 'cause he was on a board that was conflicting, so, you know, I, I would hate to ask them to move their date, but honestly, that's why, uh, I applied. A long time ago, before Noel became Carolina Beach's town attorney, I did apply for that position, but in that application, I wrote on the letter and said, "Uh, I can't actually do this because I've got a conflict that day," and didn't get an interview, but that's the only other town that I've, uh, applied for, uh, for town attorney. Uh, because of my experience, it's been in, uh, town management, master's of public administration, I do have dear friends in the community that, uh, tend to represent, uh, the league of municipality and otherwise, and I do receive referrals from time to time on cases like that because of my background in litigation, cases like that. But, uh, as most know in eastern North Carolina, there's really one firm that does all the legal, uh, all the, uh, league of municipality work, uh, and, you know, I've worked with those guys over the years as well, but, uh, certainly not with that firm. Uh, but, you know, I, I, I don't have any direct ties to Holden Beach, which I think is a positive. Uh, my father would be mad at me, at me if I didn't mention my grandfather did own two lots here in the sixties, fifties or sixties. Uh, I tried to look them up, I couldn't find the deeds where he bought them, I could only find the deeds where he sold them and he sold them in seventy-seven, but that would be my only tie to the community, which I think is, uh, is something that's important for me because if we're in closed session and you're asking me for my legal opinion with regard to something, I wouldn't want my own personal interest to, uh, affect that in any way.
What was your grandfather's name?
Charles Cobal. It was lot fifty-three and fifty-four. Uh, owned, I guess, Ocean Boulevard or whatever the, the main drag is, uh, but he, he sold them in seventy-seven, but I couldn't find the deed from when he bought them, 'cause you have to actually go to, uh, Bolivia to see those deeds.
Any ties to Kermit Cobal?
Don't know him. Don't know him. The only other Cobal in this region that I know that I related to is John Cobal, who's an attorney in Wilmington. We've never really figured out exactly how our link, but his family is also from the Greensboro area and then the Cobal Warren Smith Funeral Home, the gentleman that started that, he's also from, uh, the Piedmont, which is where my family's from and there's lots and lots of Cobals.
Okay. I, I heard you mention that you did some, uh, litigation around, uh, development fees, so I take it you're very up to date on the changing world of development fees, impact fees and the difficulties towns and counties are going through trying to get it right, even several years after it was imposed on us?
I, I noticed that y'all had a recent study done by Ralph Tellus, very, very familiar. I, I noticed you're dealing with system development fees and I understand the difference between impact fees and system development fees and, uh, and we just went through that, uh, as H2Go, because we're building a forty-two million dollar, uh, R O plant, which changes everything.
Mm-huh.
Uh, and so we just went through that whole process of changing our system development fees. And also, uh, I, I must say, even though I know this is on Facebook, I, I understand working in Brunswick County, I understand working with the county, I understand working with other groups, uh, in the county, uh, from a legal perspective. H2Go has really been in the middle of a lot of stuff, uh, over the past five years, uh, and, and, you know, we've, I've been right in the middle of most of that, trying to do the best I can to advocate for the board who's in control at that time and, uh, you know, I think it goes to say a lot that I can have three changes in boards that were completely opposite and still have, not survive, but have the trust of all three boards, that I'm doing what's in the best interest and/or what that board has chosen, uh, us to do legally.
Okay. Mike, I'll pass it to you.
You will. Could you look at your, your resume and you have government property disposition and acquisition? Could you give us a little background on just what that entailed?
Well, we, with H2Go, we have, we bought the land the R O plant was gonna be on and, uh, then we couldn't get approval to build it, so we bought another property, uh, and that was actually an acquisition through a, uh, bank foreclosure. And then we ended up selling the first lot. And so if you're talking about real property, uh, I have done that. We, we do easements and condemnations all the time with the water and sewer business. Uh, I probably see at least one deed and dedication a month, if not more, uh, from developments. We're, we're, the northeastern part of Brunswick County is probably the fastest growing area in the country, uh, so I review at least one deed and dedication a month, sometimes two or three. Uh, sometimes they come in the day of the meeting, uh, so I, if, I, I've dealt with that. Most of the, uh, i- if you're referencing real property, it's, most of the personal property type purchases and, uh, asset transfers, staff's always handled. I, I haven't had to get involved with any of that, other than when we were building our wastewater treatment plant, there were a couple of significantly large items, uh, that we purchased that we weren't allowed, we weren't able to use when the contractor ended up following through and so we had to creatively find ways to either reuse or sell or, or otherwise, uh, those assets. But, and, and one thing I, I wanna say, my, my brother's a finance officer in a little town in North Carolina and I called, talked to him and his manager because I don't like putting town administrator or MPA on these resumes, 'cause I have no interest in doing any of that work. Um, I, I only have an interest in the attorney side of providing legal advice to the board and to the manager as needed. I have no interest, uh, you know, in any of those and I've been very lucky and I'm sure I'd be just as lucky here, uh, the managers I've worked with, uh, the directors in, at H2Go are very knowledgeable. Uh, in fact, they sometimes know more about one-thirty A than, than I do. I have to go back and check them because they're doing it sixty hours a week when I'm doing it ten hours a week. Uh, and I understand this is a one-sixty A organization, not a one-thirty, but, uh, you know, I, I tend to rely on, uh, the expertise of those that are doing the job full-time and would only be here to provide that additional, uh, legal advice or research that's necessary.
Okay. You're also- You also indicate that you've drafted numerous ordinances. Could you give us a little indication of what type of ordinance you drafted?
Absolutely. I just, over the past couple of years, you know, we drafted different resolutions, we drafted different rules and regs that we deal with with H2Go. And most recently, we've been dealing with very significant complicated interlocal agreements. When it comes to actual town ordinances, when I was in Billmore Forest, we were involved in a lot of sort of cutting-edge architectural review type requirements. Billmore Forest is a really unique town. When I was there, we had, I think, six hundred and fifty houses in a three hundred and fifty million dollar valuation. And remember, we're talking about the early nineties. It was a very affluent neighborhood. And we were at that time studying New England and California, trying to identify how we can put forth certain ordinances or regulations that had to do with aesthetic appearances. Now, those are across the country now, but at those point in times, we were sort of cutting edge on dealing with those type issues. So I don't know if that answers your question.
No, that's fine. And could you also tell us a little bit about your involvement with the regulatory agencies in Brunswick County? KAMA or?
Right. And we don't deal a lot with KAMA with H2Go, but I have dealt with, for residents in the coastal communities and for other organizations, HOAs or otherwise, that have done marinas or boat slips or otherwise. I have dealt with KAMA, I've dealt with the Corps of Engineer, I've dealt with those organizations, not specifically from a town perspective. But I have dealt with all of those organizations over the years with meeting those guidelines. I've actually represented a couple of homeowners with regard to some of the beach re-nourishment type issues. There's a lot of that going on in Pender County. And I've been adverse to my dear friend, Mr. Eads, who represents a couple of those towns in that area where I've had to represent residents that were being adversely affected by some of that type stuff. But one other thing that I would suggest is, even though I'm a one-man band, you know, I'm a sole practitioner. I have, over the years, made so many great contacts in the community with people that are truly specialists in what they do. And I've always tried to provide my clients with the least expensive, but best qualified individual, should I not be able to assist them in a particular matter. I'm not one that's trying to do every single type of claim out there. Over the years, even with H2Go, we've run into a couple of major state regulatory type claims where even our adversaries will bring in firms from Raleigh and otherwise. And I have close ties with really qualified folks that I would recommend and work with to represent the organization to the best that you can get. And I have done that over the years as well. So it's not just me.
I think you said you have two paralegals or two support staff?
I typically have two full-timers. Because of COVID, right now, I only have one. So COVID's been tough over the years.
And does that person do the majority of your legal research for you?
I do it.
You do the legal research?
Yeah, I do it. I do a majority of the work. My legal assistant is primarily there to do the mailing and answering the phone and things that she can do that takes that burden off me so that I can do the legal work.
And just to go over the availability, I know you said there's a conflict on the third Tuesday. But how much time could you dedicate to us?
I'm trying to remember what the proposal was, but, you know, ten hours a week would be a problem. And I think that's what it was, but I can't remember and I apologize for not having looked at that.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Murdock?
I've got a couple of questions. One, and he touched on it, the scheduled conflict. So if we needed you, are you saying that it would just not be feasible if they didn't change their meeting schedule? I don't know what time their meetings are, but are they the same time as ours?
They'd be at six o'clock, third Tuesday. It'd be tough to do two meetings in one day.
I understand completely. We have to be two places at the same time a lot of times, it seems like. But if you could, we've had an out-of-town attorney in the past. I was interested in how you would charge to, if it not be actually at a meeting, to come to the town and back, how you would charge for that. I didn't see that in your.
And I tell you, I have pined over that question, because I knew that one was coming. I have pined over that for a couple of reasons. One, because I feel like if I can get in here and do a great job, it's not going to matter in five years. It's not going to matter to you, it's not going to matter to me. What I mean by that is I might not care that I got to drive two hours to get here and back, because it's something I enjoy doing. Currently, my problem with it is, as a father of two and trying to pay bills and someone who didn't grow up with money, if I were to come down here to a one-hour meeting and the hourly rate that I proposed was two hundred an hour, and I spent three hours plus and got paid two hundred dollars, that would be difficult compared to, you know, what I normally do. I do charge H2Go travel and they've never had a question. I started ten years ago at two hundred an hour with them. That was my actual rate by going rate at that point in time. Haven't asked for any increase in the decade I've been with them. It's public record that at the last meeting, they raised me to two fifty. Not because I asked for it. I, in fact, told them I would hate for them to raise it and then them all lose the election, me get fired because of it, because I, you know, I enjoyed being there. But in reality, I think it comes down to the fact that the two hundred dollar an hour rate that I proposed, I think is probably reasonable for what town attorneys get paid. And I think that what you're getting by paying an attorney who's traveling is someone who's got a lot more experience in a lot of different areas than maybe someone who doesn't have as broad a practice. Now, that may not be true, because I've litigated against some really good lawyers down here over the years that may have been twenty years in Raleigh and decided to finish their practice down here. And I know that's what, when I used to be in the town management world, that's what they were always looking for, was that manager that had forty years' experience in the military or thirty years' experience doing something somewhere else and they retired and they got this bargain. You know, and that may be one of the other candidates and that would be a positive. But the short answer is yes, I would charge for the travel. So the time that I leave the office until the time I get back to the office, I would charge, because I feel that that would be fair, given the time. And not that it matters to you, but my litigation rate currently is three hundred an hour. And we're as busy as we possibly can be. And that's not trying to talk you out of hiring. And I'm on the lower end of that spectrum. In Wilmington, most of the litigators that have sixteen years' experience and do what we do, do what I do, are billing at least fifty dollars an hour, if not seventy-five an hour more than I do. What I told the board at my last meeting with H2Go when they gave me the raise is I appreciated the opportunity of being two hundred an hour, because I always felt like I could do extra work. And what I mean by that is, if I can do it in thirty minutes, then it's okay. Or I can do it in forty-five and it's superb. I felt like I could do the forty-five because I had a two hundred dollar an hour rate. Sometimes with clients, I see attorneys that have six hundred, six hundred and fifty dollar rates and they got to fly through it, because client's not going to pay all that money for that. And, you know, I've been involved in some litigation recently with, you know, Raleigh firms, you all read the papers, where they spent a million dollars on a case that lasted two years. I don't even know how you get there. I'm pretty proud of what we did with H2Go in that last litigation. I think our counterparts, public record is, they spent a million dollars on the case and Brian Eads and I spent about two hundred. Same case. We're at all the same depositions, all the same hearings, all the same research, all the same. We were billing two hundred an hour and they were billing who knows what. And so I think that as a fiduciary for your constituents, that's a great question. If you've got somebody in town that's equally qualified, that's not going to pay you to travel once a month, twice a month, that makes sense. If you're getting a better bargain, because you're getting somebody with more experience or different experience or different opportunity, it might be worth that extra fund. I did try to look at your budget. I didn't see a legal line. I'm guessing it's other professional services, because I was going to just try to see what your budget was for legal.
And I don't know that.
The other one I saw, it looked like professional services with like sixty-eight thousand or something like that. That might have been it. I don't know. I'm not going to answer your questions, I'm sorry.
The second part of this, and I don't know if I heard you correctly, I think I did, but I could be wrong, that you're not in the transactional business of deeds and stuff like that. I mean, I'm assuming that that's in your realm of what you can do.
I'm absolutely not in the transactional business. I have a gentleman by the name of Rob Williams that drafts all the deeds and does all my transactional.
And he's not in your firm?
He's not in my firm. But we've worked closely together for ten years and never had a problem. You know, and if the town had someone local that was transactional that they wanted to work with, wouldn't bother me. You know, that's not what I'm looking to do. That's not what my talent, experience and specialization or whatever is, so. So you got that right.
Well, that's all my questions. I really appreciate you coming out.
Yeah, absolutely.
The commissioner did a good job asking questions, so I had to mark some of mine off. I was a boy scout at once, but I never made the Eagle Scout. Twelve years old and you were Eagle Scout?
Yes, sir. I appreciate you noticing that. First job I ever got, I got because that was on the resume.
Yeah. I know how much work it takes.
Scott Hedrick with Hedrick Morton was an Eagle and he noticed that on the resume. And I've always put it on there ever since. It's not as big a deal anymore, I don't think, for some guys.
Well, I think it is. Those people that know what it takes to do that appreciate it, yeah.
My brother's an Eagle and I got two nephews that are Eagles, so it was something important in our family.
Well, it says something for your family, sir. I'm trying to figure out how to ask this, and I might show how out of touch I am by asking it, but.
That could hurt my feelings.
I might hurt my own. The H2Go issue touches Holden Beach in the fact that, before you came through the doors this afternoon, we were having a conversation about water bills going up and how it's going to impact the towns and the county and so forth, us being one. I don't know if this makes sense or not, but what you guys do obviously has impacted Holden Beach. Do you see any future potential conflicts between you representing, being part of, past, present, future, the H2Go and Holden Beach? Could we meet this way later on?
I don't foresee that. But, and let me say this. If Holden Beach were ever in a lawsuit against H2Go or vice versa, then I would be conflicted out of being a part of that litigation. It wouldn't conflict me out of representing the organizations outside of that particular issue. Now, my understanding is, and maybe I'm going to get into weeds and I apologize if I'm getting into the weeds, but I've been there ten years. It's my understanding that most of the county studies, including the most recent rate change, which I think y'all talked about your last meeting, didn't include Leland or H2Go in their plan. And that's regardless of whether Leland or H2Go are in or out of that plan. I think they've already sort of made the conclusion that that region's not going to be a part of that plan. If that's what you're suggesting creates the adverse effect on Holden Beach, those decisions made by the county, then certainly that's possible.
I know that's a little far-reaching, but just, I didn't know if you had some insight to share there. Went to Appalachian. My brother taught there for a while. Interesting point there, but the real question is, what happened to the mountain man? Somebody told me they'd done away with him.
I haven't been up there in the last year because of the pandemic.
Do you know if they did away with him?
I don't think they have. I mean, I think there's still merchandise out there. My grandmother went to App State during the twenties. And my daughter, who's twelve, is dying to go there, so we're big fans of App State.
The Zaya Festival, they going to have it this year?
They are, but it's not going to be the Zaya Festival.
They're going to be in mode or something?
Well, they're piecing and parceling it out, so like concerts are going to be in August. And I think they're going to have the Queen's Arrival and all that in April. And they're going to spread it out so much, it's going to be sad how it's going to be done. But they are still trying to do it. Last year, we did nothing.
Yeah. Changing the subject, going back to you were talking about charging us for travel. And I can understand why you do that. Those of us that are still having to find a nickel or a penny here and there that work. I know I do a lot of traveling and talking on the telephone when I'm traveling. And in today's world with the ability to, you don't even have to have a phone in your hand anymore when you're driving. And I can work just as well behind the steering wheel as I can sitting at my desk in my office. So, sir, and trying to say this in a polite way, I know there's no way in the world you'd be charging us travel time coming down here and you'd be on your phone working, charging another client.
Well, that wouldn't be ethical. And I happen to be on the Eastern North Carolina Ethics Board for the bar, so I'd be the last one doing that.
You wouldn't be, you wouldn't be one of these attorneys that works thirty-eight hours a day?
No. I have to do it. When I go to H2Go's meeting, I leave the office at five fifteen and I call my mom.
Well, I didn't mean that, but you know what I'm talking about.
I do, I do. And I've learned a lot from my brother, who's a finance officer. It's funny, there was, and I won't mention his name, great commissioner who's recently passed, who was really picky about the bills. And it was funny, I got the advice from my brother one time. He said, when the meeting's over, take off. And I'm like, well, you know, why do I need to do that? And he says, because there's at least one in the room that thinks you're still billing. And so that's typically what I do. I mean, if I'm at an H2Go meeting, it happened at the last meeting and they wanted to talk about something, they didn't need the lawyer, I said, would y'all like me to leave? Would you like me to go? I'm happy to leave. You don't need me. But, and I understand the argument that, you know, you could be doing other things. My biggest concern is, and, you know, if you don't hire me, it's such a pleasure to meet you all. I hope that I am able to represent you somewhere else along the way. But the way I always look at it, I'm a big family man. And if I'm taking myself away from my kids' games or my kids for the evening, I want to make sure that I'm getting paid what my requisite, you know, credibility and credentials provides. And so it has nothing to do with, you know, Mayor Holden or Holden Beach or any of you guys. If I'm going to take three hours and drive down the road to Brunswick County and back and sit in a meeting for an hour and do my best I can, I don't want to come home with two hundred dollars. Because I don't think that's fair to my family or my kids, so. Hope that doesn't offend anybody, but I'm a very honest, straightforward, straight shooter, as you can tell. Not going to butter it up. This is what you get.
Mike asked some questions alluding to this a minute ago, about KAMA and some of these other organizations we have to work with. The Corps of Engineers, we do a lot of work with the Corps of Engineers, dredge. The Corps of Engineers, we do a lot of work with the Corps of Engineers dredging and permitting and so forth. And I'm assuming you probably have had some communications, working relationships with the Corps in the past. Have you had any kind of background in regards to beach preservation, waterway dredging, terminal balloons, jetties, anything along the coastal permitting process?
Other than peers and private homeowners who've had those minor issues, which is completely different than what you deal with, the answer's no. It doesn't mean I can't get up to speed quickly. It doesn't mean that I can't rely on, you know, the manager's experience and just provide the legal assistance that's necessary. But, you know, I think the only way you truly get that experience is if you're a beach community and you're working through those renourishment programs. And, you know, you're gonna have a handful of lawyers that got them and, you know, after we do one, I'll be one of those lawyers. But until then, you know, the honest answer is I've never done a renourishment program on behalf of a town before.
Have you ever been involved with any kind of issues with any municipality or other government agency in regards to public parking or planning?
No, and I think that's kind of a new issue anyway.
Yeah, it is. We're all learning.
And that's everywhere, you see.
We're all getting prosecuted together.
And with regard to those issues, what I would suggest is, and I assume y'all are already doing this with your fellow mayors and commissioners, but, you know, when I was in town management, benchmarking with your neighbors was really important. And, you know, as long as they aren't adverse to you on the same issues, you can work together. Brian Eads, who represents Leland and I think one of the beaches down here and also one in Pender County and are dear friends. And he and his firm have done, for Eastern North Carolina, represented probably more than most in those beach-related issues. But I tend to be able to find those friends that can help me along the way when you're doing something that's different. I learned from Dan Morton, a very wise comment early when I was learning how to litigate, which is, you know, "I'm a litigator and I know how to litigate anything. All I need to do is know the law." And I think the same comes true when you're dealing with these type of issues. The task that the lawyer has to do, whether it's drafting, negotiating or otherwise, that's what we do every single day. All we have to do is understand what the statutory regulations are, what the government's making us do, whether they're federal or state, and make sure we either meet those guidelines or we're not the only ones that are getting sued when it happens and we're ready to protect ourselves, so.
Change the subject to religion for just a minute, which you're not supposed to talk about. So I'm not going to talk about religion, but I am going to talk about, in seeing your paperwork here, Pine Valley Methodist Church. Do you happen to know Reggie Rushing? He was a minister there.
How long ago would that have been?
Can't remember what year it was. It might have been before you.
It's probably before I got here.
But he's the chaplain at our chapel next door.
I got you, I got you.
Just a little bone to throw.
Yeah, I grew up in Burlington in a big Methodist church and that's been important for me and my family, so. But that has nothing to do with this.
What, sir, is your strongest and best asset or attribute? What do you do best? What's the best thing about you?
I am really good at getting people to do what I want them to do. So I've been accused of being not even.
I noticed your wife's not here.
I've been accused of being.
Would you say that in front of your wife?
And you can ask Noel, which I'm sure y'all are all familiar with. The thing I get from my colleagues most is the fact that I'm reasonable, I'm easy to work with, but I'm really good at getting things resolved. So where there are certain personalities that are more aggravated and fight-prone, that's not my asset, that's not me. If you're looking for somebody that's gonna fight all, every single one of your battles, I'm not the guy. When I first started at H2Go, we had a manager who's been gone a long time who wanted to sue everybody always. And, you know, sometimes you gotta sue. When you sue, you do a good job and you win, and that's what we've done. But that shouldn't ever be the first choice because that's where you're gonna spend a hundred thousand dollars. That's where you're gonna spend a half a million dollars. And so one of my best attributes, and, you know, Noel's complimented me many times with this, is I'm really good at getting things resolved, at being able to see through what it is that the countering sides really want and then try to figure out how we can satisfy those sides to come to some type of resolution and then put it in some type of binding written form. Also, another one of my attributes, and I hate to keep going back to this, but I live in a tiny little neighborhood in Wilmington called Pine Valley and I lived there on purpose. I lived there because I don't meet a lot of people that I litigate with. I don't meet a lot of people that I may be adverse to. I purposely chosen to litigate on my own as a sole practitioner because I don't like conflicts. In other words, I want to be able to represent everybody who walks through the door. And I think that's important so that I can be independent in my representation of the client. Now, having done this for sixteen years and having represented over a thousand clients, you know, I do have conflicts from time to time. It happens. It's gonna happen, but not like it would if I had three partners. Not like it would if I owned land all over the place. I've got a beautiful little house in one little neighborhood and I try to be a litigator otherwise and try not to create conflicts through clubs or otherwise. The civic work that I've done is either associated with the school or with organizations that, you know, everyone can be a part of. And I've done that purposely because I don't want anyone to be able to have anything on me per se to negotiate this or negotiate that, so.
What is your weakest, most needed to improve part of yourself?
I don't like to only go on my personal opinion. I like to be able to work with others that are in the same situation as me or that have similar experience or similar knowledge to be able to discuss or talk out the issue so that we can find the best resolution. It's not, it's tough to be a sole practitioner and not have partners to go to, but I've got so many friends in the community that are litigators like myself, like Noel or otherwise, that I go to and we share information and we benchmark. And if I had a weakness, the weakness would be that I want to make sure that we're able to get the best resolution possible as opposed to whatever that first response might be.
Commissioners, you got anything else? Mr. Hewitt, you got anything? Madam Clerk, you got anything?
No, sir.
We thank you very much for being here, sir. You're a very impressive fellow and enjoy the sunny ride back.
I just appreciate the opportunity to come and I have to admit, I've been here many times, but every time, and I'm not just saying this because I'm here talking to y'all, but every time you come across that bridge, that view.
That's right.
You can't, I mean, there's nothing like that view anywhere, right?
It's why I live here.
How often, how often do people rap right there on the bridge? I'm just curious.
They slow down a lot.
They scrape the sides.
Because every time I've been over it, they got the camera going. You know, there's at least somebody, "That's gorgeous."
Hanging out the window. I'll tell you one thing about the bridge. We get a lot of compliments on the bridge and I guess the good Lord works in many ways and we appreciate him working on this, but the head bridge engineer for the State of North Carolina Department of Transportation has had a house here at Holden Beach for many, many years and his father and mother-in-law have been coming, or they did, gone now, but they were coming here back in the late fifties. So he had reason to do a good job on that bridge.
And just the way it bends, it's gorgeous.
Yeah, thank you so much for being here.
Thank you.
Certainly a pleasure.
All right, Madam Clerk, do we have anything else left other than adjournment?
No, sir.
Anything, Mr. Hewitt? Need a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
All right, we got a motion. Did we come into session or does this work?
We're still in, were we gonna discuss a selection today?
Well, that's what I said, is there anything else for us to do? I hear none.
This was a special meeting and it wasn't on the agenda.
Okay.
I mean, you know.
Technically, you can add a discussion to the agenda. Technically, you can add a discussion on the agenda, but all of the board members have to be in agreement to do that. But it hasn't been advertised.
Well, we would not be able to take action on it without it being on the agenda. We could review what we saw today, I guess, but not discuss potential hiring or anything, is that?
Right, we just had it on there for interviews today. We didn't have it on there for.
So we've got a motion on the table to adjourn.
One second before we adjourn. Do you have your calendar, Brian? Because we could schedule a special meeting to discuss and make a decision on who to retain rather than waiting for the regular meeting to come up. And at the same time, we could discuss the opening and what we want to do about that at the special meeting.
I don't have any action today, so really, you can't really recess it and do that because it would be a whole other topic. It might be better if you guys just all send me your availability since Mayor Person and Brown's not here either and we could just schedule it off of that. We just did the interview, we didn't do any action today.
No, I got you, but what we're doing, instead of just adjourning it, we would adjourn it with a date certain to bring it back up.
But it would be the same topic if we're recessing it.
It's still the same meeting.
At that point, we couldn't add another topic because it would have, it would.
It's still the same meeting.
Would we have to notify the public that we were?
I think it would be cleaner to just schedule a meeting.
It's still the same meeting.
Okay, so then move to adjourn.
Yeah, well, I can't remember who did what. All in favor, say aye. Foe, say no, we're adjourned.